And Chairperson, Commissioner Johnson will probably be absent for the, almost the whole meeting.
Okay.
On item number three.
Okay. I would recommend we start the meeting, and when we get to that item, we can talk about that at the appropriate time.
I will now call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the City of Hollister, May 23, Planning Commission Meeting. May I have verification of agenda posting, please?
Good evening. The agenda for the Thursday, May 23, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting was posted on Friday, May 17 of 2019 at 3:22 PM.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioner Munzer, would you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Will you please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready to the.
United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator.
Rule call, please.
Chairperson. Chairperson Huboy.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens is absent. Commissioner Munzer.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson is absent. Commissioner Henderson.
Here.
I will ask for approval of minutes dated April 25, 2019.
I will make the motion to approve the minutes for April 25 as written.
Second.
I have the motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We go to communications from the public on items not listed on the agenda. Are there any speaker cards, Brian?
I do not have a speaker card, but if someone does from the public, now would be the time.
Anyone in the audience care to address the commission on any item not on the agenda? With no speakers, we will go into public hearing. Item number one, Site and Architectural Review 2019-5, Manuel Alvarez. The applicant is requesting site and architectural approvals to construct a two-story residential duplex on a site with an existing residential unit located at 638 Line Street, further identified as San Benito County Assessor Parcel Number 052-010-017. This property is located in the R3-M/PC zoning district east of West Side Boulevard and north of South Street. Sequel is categorically exempt. Abraham, staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, good evening. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting a site and architectural review for a duplex on an existing 10,256 acre lot with one existing single-family residential unit. And the property is within the R3 MPZ, Medium Density Residential Performance Overlay Zoning District. The Medium Density Residential Performance Overlay District allows three units on a 10,000 square foot lot, and then for each additional unit after that, it's, the lot has to be an additional, I believe it's 3,600 square feet. So, the proposal would meet the intent. The duplex would be set back behind the residential unit towards the southeast corner, southwest corner of the property, as you can see on the, on the screen. The, the existing single-family residential unit towards Line Street has two bedrooms and one and a half bath. The new duplexes would each be at 1,825 square feet, and they would each have four bedrooms and three bathrooms, with the living room, kitchen, and one full bathroom and one full bedroom on the first floor, and then on the second floor, they would each have three bedrooms, including a master bathroom, bedroom, and then a, two bathrooms and a laundry area. The east elevation would face Line Street. Again, it's, it'll be set back behind the existing single-family residential home. The two units will have a centralized entryway, and they will be reflection of each, of each other. There will be a shared entry porch, which has rock columns, and each doorway has a small window next to it. The first floor would be of stucco finish, and a rectangular window into the living room and kitchen area would also be on the first floor. The upper floors would have a vertical siding, and the facade finishes continue around to the rear, which is the western elevation of the duplex. Each unit should have private open space, and so, one of the units would have a minimum of 340 square feet of private open space. The other unit would have a minimum of 221 square feet of private open space, and the existing single-family home will also have a private open space area of 320 square feet. The requirement, as it is right now, is that for multifamily, there is a minimum requirement of 100 square feet of private open space with minimum dimensions of 10 feet. So, this meets the, the intent of the zoning ordinance. There would also be a common area, common open space area, as you can see, between the duplex and the, and the house and the parking area of 1,100 square feet as well. The parking requirements is one and a half parking spaces for one or two-bedroom units, two parking spaces for three-bedroom units and plus, and so, therefore, for the one existing residential unit with two bedrooms, there's a one and a half parking space requirement. For the duplex, there's a four, there's four parking space requirement for a total of 5.5. City rounds up to six, and the applicant is proposing a minimum of six parking spaces on site with a new paved parking area for four parking spaces on the, on the south side of the existing single-family residential unit. A condition of approval also requires that the existing driveway on, on the site, there's, there's an existing driveway on the site that actually has, it's kind of a dirt driveway, and so, the requirement is that that also gets paved. There, the resolution, staff would like to add three additional conditions to the resolution. Towards the end of the resolution, essentially, condition number 52 would be that each unit have its air conditioning unit, each of the residential units within the duplex. Condition number 53 would read that the common walls within the multifamily residential unit shall be designed and constructed in a manner which sound noise could not carry over from one residential unit to the next, and subject to the approval of the building official. And then, condition number 54, we just want to make sure that there is at least washer and dryer connections on the, on the units. The floor plans do show a laundry room on the second floor, which is good. We just want to make sure that it's, it's part of the conditions. We, we want to make sure that these are, these become standard conditions, especially within multifamily residential development. And with that, staff recommends that the City of Hollister Planning Commission review the applicant's request, receive all written oral testimony regarding the proposal, and approve site and architectural review, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. Are there any questions for staff?
Thank you, Abraham. Any questions on the staff report?
I have none at this time.
Okay. No further questions. I will go into the public hearing now at 13 minutes past 6. Any speaker cards on this item, Abraham?
None.
Brian, anyone in the audience, is the applicant here this evening, care to address commission on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing now at 6:13, and bring it back to commission for discussion. I will say that, you know, looking over the, the plans is fairly well progressed in the engineering aspect, and put together very nicely in terms of the engineering sturdy house. Now, if we go to the elevations, the elevations, what you have there is, you know, it's, it's a box, and sometimes, what I've seen in the past is, you know, to mitigate the bulk of, try to articulate the exterior, we've seen this, there's some siding and use of different materials. Not always, in my view, the best approach on this. I think that it may, you may consider that instead of, you know, I guess kind of eclectic the way you got the stone and the, and the siding and the, and the stucco, it might be, another approach would, would be to maybe make it all plaster with a, maybe a band to, or some fur outs, and it doesn't say on the elevation what the color scheme is, so, I don't know if that was something that was missing, but, and also, you, you may consider like a cultured stone wainscote around the front, perhaps, try to, I think that that could have been another choice to mitigate the bulk of the elevations. However, since it's tucked behind the house and it's kind of nestled back there, so, visibility is, is limited. And this is my view, you know, I'm just expressing it from aesthetics, it somewhat can be subjective.
Point taken.
But I think for, if this was subject to more public viewing, I would have requested that the elevation be worked on a little bit more.
Good.
But since it's not, but those are my comments, I just want to say that. In the future, when we see a two-story box like that, you know, we can suggest other ways to kind of articulate the exteriors.
That's good.
I don't know what my fellow commissioners think about that, but, other than that, I, I think everything else is, is, I'm fine with it. Any other discussion on this item?
I've got nothing further to discuss.
Commissioner Henderson? I will entertain a motion.
I will make the motion to approve Site and Architectural Design Review Number 2019-5. Is there PC resolution on this one?
23.
23. With the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolutions, as well as the conditions listed in Report 52, 53, and 54.
Second.
A motion, second. Any further discussion? I have the motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number one has been approved. We'll go into item number two, Site and Architectural Review 2019-2. Amanda Tybok, the applicant is requesting site and architectural approval for the construction of a 13,752 square foot cannabis nursery facility on a 1.03 acre site. The project is located at 1920 Airway Drive and the Industrial Business Park. IBP is the acronym for that. Zoning District further identified as San Benito County Assessor Parcel Number 053-420-028. Sequel is mitigated negative declaration. Abraham?
Chairperson Huboy and members of the commission, this item has been requested for continuance to the regular Planning Commission meeting of June 27, which is next month. There is additional information that staff requested from the applicant prior to, prior to bringing it to a public hearing. So, the request is that, if, if possible, continue this item for the June 27 Planning Commission meeting.
Yes. Okay, so, the item has been requested for continuance to June 27, 2019. I will ask for a vote to, to confirm that.
You mean a motion?
A motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that, that Site and Architectural Review 2019-2 be continued for the next Planning Commission meeting on June 27.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number two has been continued to June 27.
Do you want to?
We move to item number three, Tentative Map 2016-3, Extension and Conditional Use Permit 2016-6 for a planned unit development. I'm going to read the description on this, and the last time this came up, I recuse myself because I have, Huboy Architecture has provided architectural services on this project, even though the time limit has expired for economic interest, I still would feel more appropriate if I did not deliberate on this item, so.
Duly noted.
So, I'm going to read it, and then I will recuse myself, and Vice Chairman Munzer will preside in my absence.
After you read it, Mr. Chairman, I'll have a brief statement regarding that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. So, Tentative Map 2016-3, Extension and Conditional Use Permit 2016-6 for Planned Unit Development. Jim Matthews, the applicant, is requesting the Plan, Planning Commission's approval of a tentative map and conditional use permit for a planned unit development extension. On June 22, 2016, the City of Hollister Planning Commission approved tentative map 2016-3, and conditional use permit 2016-6 for eight single-family homes and three open space lots on a 1.23 acre property. On June 14, 2018, the Planning Commission approved a one-year extension of the tentative map and conditional use permit, which expires on June 22, 2019. The property is located at 1650 Cienega Road, further identified as San Benito County Assessor's Parcel Number 020-170-035. Sequel categorically exempt. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given that you are recusing yourself in this matter, we only have three members here, there's essentially no action that can be taken on this matter by the remaining two members, because we lack a quorum. My anticipation is that it'll be brought back to the June 27, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, with a recommendation that the commission, hopefully consisting of more than just two remaining members at that time, extend a, an extension on the tentative map retroactive to today's date, because as you read, it is expire, it is expected to expire June 22, 2019, which will be a few days prior to the next meeting.
Thank you, Jason. So, with that said, then we'll go on to item number four.
I have a question, though. Since Commissioner Johnson may be coming later, would it be, would it make sense to just push this agenda item to the end?
I was unaware of that. That would make sense unless staff has some objection to that.
Abraham, did she indicate that she would come to the meeting tonight?
Yeah, so, Commissioner Johnson did indicate that she has a function, school function with her son, and that's really important to be there, and that she would try, she would try to be here right after that. She didn't anticipate that it would be any time sooner than eight o'clock, though, but she would try to be here by then, if the meeting still was going on by that time.
So, then my recommendation would be that we just trail this matter, to see whether or not Commissioner Johnson gets here in time to deal with it.
Okay, and consensus on pushing this matter back on the agenda if Commissioner Johnson does attend.
Yeah.
Within the time period.
Makes sense.
Okay. Do we need a vote on that?
Yeah.
Does that require a vote, Jason?
No, I think there's consensus to trail the matter.
Okay, consensus is, okay, great. Okay, very good. So, we'll move on to item number four, Site and Architectural 2018-22 and Conditional Use Permit 2019-3 for a planned unit development. Hollister Enterprises, the applicant is requesting a site and architectural and conditional use permit approval to modify the previous approval of a site and architectural review 2017-6, and conditional use permit 2017-6, which approved 35 multifamily units, seven duplex and seven triplex buildings, in the Roberts Ranch subdivision, Tentative Map 2016-1. The applicant is proposing to change the seven previously approved duplexes into triplex residential buildings, and the seven previously approved triplex residential buildings into fourplex residential buildings, for a total of 49 multifamily units. The project is located on the northeast corner of Enterprise Road and Airline Highway, further identified as San Benito County Assessor Parcel Numbers 057 and, 057, excuse me, dash 049, dash 010, 057 dash 049 dash 002, and 020 dash 310, dash 009. Sequel is with the environmental impact report. And I can see after this, that this item has been requested for continuance to the regular Planning Commission of June 27, 2019. So, we would need a motion to continue that.
Yes, Chair Huboy, I'd ask you that you actually open the public hearing on this, and whether or not people want to speak is fine, but then you could address the issue of continuing it to the June 21, 2019 meeting.
Thank you, Jason. I will open up the public hearing now at 6:25. Any speakers on this item?
None.
No speakers? Well, we continue to keep it open until?
We'd be looking for a motion to continue it to June 27, 2019, as well as continue the public hearing to that date.
I entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to 2007, is it 17, 2000, June 27?
27.
2019.
June 27, yes.
Continue the item to that.
With an open.
With, with keeping the public comment period open.
Correct.
Second.
I, I needed a motion.
Oh, I, I thought you made the motion. I'm sorry.
I'm entertaining a motion.
I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
That's fine.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will see item number four on June 27, 2019.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask that you please recall number two, because it appears to me that we did not open the public hearing on that matter, we simply continued it.
That is correct. So, I would need a motion to continue, for the item number two, which is the Site and Architectural Review 2019-2, to continue the public hearing, and keep it, public hearing open until 2000, 20, June 27, 2019.
And having recalled item number two, we'll actually need to open the public hearing and see if anyone wants to speak on it.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing at 6:25. Any speaker, item, speaker cards on item number two?
We have none.
Okay, now I'll ask that motion, I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing to June 27, 2019 for item number two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will see item number two on June 27. Okay, we go to item number five, Site and Architectural 2019-13. Inco Investments LLC, the applicant is requesting site and architectural approval to construct a 19,200 square foot hangar on the Hollister Airport property. The property is located at 220 Skyline Drive, Sky Lane Drive, in the A Airport zoning district. The project site is, location is further identified as San Benito County Assessor Parcel 050 dash 010 dash 001. Sequel categorically exempt. Abraham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, thank you. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting site and architectural approval of a 19,200 square foot air, building, hangar, 160 feet by 200, and it's at 220 Skyline Drive, as you mentioned, in the A zoning district in the Hollister Municipal Airport. The land use would be to store aircraft, and the building would be 32 feet and 4 inches to the top of the roof. The west elevation, well, the building would be a pre-engineered metal building with fire sprinklers. The west elevation of the building, as you can see on the screen and in your plans, would have a bifold type of door system for airplanes to be able to enter and exit from and to the building. And at the south end of the west elevation, there would be an office space on the first and second floor. The rest of the building would be open for aircraft storage. Also, on the west elevation facing the airport towards, towards the south end, there would be a balcony on the second floor facing the west towards the airport that wraps around to the south elevation. The metal siding that's proposed on the building would be all along the building, and there would be an additional door, walk-in door, on the east elevation along Sky Lane, Sky Lane Drive, and on the north elevation as well. Vehicle access would be off of San Felipe Road to Airport Drive, then vehicles can head to the north on Astro Drive, and then west on Mercury Drive or Mars Drive to go to the project site, or just from Airport Drive, head north on Sky Lane Drive to the site. Vehicle parking on the site would be within the airport hangar. However, there are at minimum 12 parking spaces adjacent to the project site across Sky Lane Drive to the east, and there's also multiple parking spaces in the vicinity. This, the, the property is within the Hollister Municipal Airport Compatibility Plan within the inner safety cir, inner safety zone. The proposed use is a hangar building within the airport, which is a permitted use pursuant to Section 1.4.2 Airport Operations of the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. In accordance to state law, neither the Airport Land Use Commission nor this compatibility plan have authority over airport operations or planning or design of aviation-related uses, of which a hangar building is a category thereof. Therefore, on the draft resolution on page 2 of 14, the, whereas number nine states, as in the screen, whereas the project site is located with. as in the screen, whereas the project site is located within the Hollister Municipal Airport and prior toations of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain approval from the Airport Land Use Commission to confirm consistency with the Hollister Municipal Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Staff recommends that, that whereas be deleted and replaced with the whereas beneath that, where it says, whereas San Benito County Airport Commission, ALAC staff, reviewed site and architectural review application 2019-13 and determined that ALAC review is not necessary based on policy 1.4.2 of the Hollister Municipal Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan as referenced in Exhibit B, letter from San Benito County Airport Land Use Commission staff attached to this resolution. And that letter is attached to the resolution as Exhibit B. We, we received this letter after the packets have gone out, were gone out to you, but essentially in working with the staff of the Airport Land Use Commission, which is San Benito County Council of Governments, as, as you all know, whenever there's a project within the safety zone of the airport, we, we refer the, the project to the Airport Land Use Commission for compatibility with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And in this particular case, per, per the policy reference on the plan, it, it is not required because it is, it is a airport related use, it is a hangar building within the airport, and so therefore, the executive director, Mary Gilbert, provided the letter indicating that a condition requiring this project to go before the Airport Land Use Commission was not necessary. So therefore, as part of the recommendation today, we would ask that, that whereas be removed. That requires the, the project to be referenced or sent to the commission to be removed and replaced with the whereas that says that it is exempt from, from that requirement as, as read on that second whereas on the screen. Also, the city council on its March, special meeting of March 25, 2019, approved resolution number 2019-62, essentially have leasing the, the land to the applicant for a 40-year lease for a hangar building, subject to approval by the planning commission, and as part of that lease with Inco Investments, per the terms of the lease, all improvements become property of the City of Hollister at the conclusion of the lease. With that, staff recommends the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written oral testimony regarding the proposal, and consider approving the draft resolution for approval of site and architectural application number 2019-13, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution with the change to whereas number nine, deleting the, the whereas on the draft report and replacing it with the whereas as presented. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff? I just, I wanted to thank you for the Hollister Municipal Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, a very comprehensive document.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I, I did have a comment on condition number 49. If we look at condition number 49, I, I had, I found that interesting, and I haven't seen a comment, a condition like that previously, where you're asking the applicant to condition the space to in excess of Title 24 requirements. You know, what, what precipitated that? What brought that about?
That, that would be a condition for, per the building department, per the building official, but, you know, we, we do, we do defer to state law, to the building code, so, so at that, if, if it's, if it's a desire of the planning commission to, to strike condition number 49 and just keep it at, at building, state building code requirement, that, that would be okay as well. Normally, just, these types of conditions are, are included to, to make the project as, as energy efficient as possible, but we cannot go beyond what the requirement of the state.
Well, if it meets the mandatory measures of Cal Green, I, I'm sure that it's going to, to be energy efficient.
Absolutely.
But it's up to your subjectivity if you want to go, the, the municipal agency has that, has that choice to go to different tiers of Cal Green.
Right.
So, I mean, I find, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I was just curious to see that.
Right, yeah, and so we, we could leave it to the building.
A green guy like myself.
Yeah, I know, I know you are. We could leave that to the building officials' discretion.
I mean, I, I think, I think that's fine. I'm just curious.
Very well.
Any other questions on staff's report? Now for the questions, I'll open up the public hearing now at 6:35. Any speaker cards on this item?
I, I appear, it looks like Ann Hall would like to speak.
Ann Hall is here.
I'm sorry, did not turn in the speaker card.
Good evening, Ann.
Good evening. I am just here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions you might have about the, the building.
Any questions for Ann? It's a, on the, I know it's a pre-manufactured metal building. It has a balcony, which is, which is nice. It's a nice feature to the building. Is, is this been, I was curious, is, do you have a metal building manufacturer selected for this project?
Yes, Fast Track Steel.
Okay.
Has been working on the metal building plans.
Okay. All right. Looks very much like a hangar with a balcony.
It's a hangar. It's a really big space to put a plant in.
Okay.
It's probably not your most architecturally interesting building, but it's, it's functional.
Right, it's functional, utilitarian, as they say, right? Yeah, well, that's good, that's good. Any other questions for Ann, who represents the applicant? Thank you, Ann. Appreciate it. Any other speakers on this item?
None.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing now at 6:37. What is the pleasure of the planning commission on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve the draft resolution for site and architectural number 2019-13, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution, as well as the whereas statement that was recommended by staff. And is there a PC resolution?
2019-24.
That the whereas is exempt from ALUC review.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The item number five has been approved. Congratulations. We go on to item number six, conditional use permit number 2019-4. Anna Marquez, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit approval for a wholesaling slash distribution business for alcoholic beverages. The project is located at 321 San Felipe Road, Suite 6, in the North Gateway NG zoning district, further identified as San Benito County Assessor Parcel number 051 dash 210 dash 006. The city council of the City of Hollister acknowledged the receipt of the Alcoholic Beverage Control ABC license review for a duplicate secondary distilled spirits imported slash wholesale ABC license at this location at the regular meeting of May 6, 2019. Sequoia is categorically exempt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
The, as you mentioned, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for a low-scale wholesaling distribution business for alcoholic beverages. Essentially, and I'll go into in detail a little bit more, but it's, it's for tequila bottles. The project is located at 321 San Felipe Road, Suite 6, in the North Gateway zoning designation of the City of Hollister. As you mentioned, Chairperson Huboy, the city council acknowledged the receipt of the Alcoholic Beverage Control license review for a duplicate secondary distilled spirits importer wholesale ABC license at this May 6 regular city council meeting, just, just earlier this month. Currently, the approximately 1,138 square foot site is a beauty salon where the applicant currently conducts business. The site plan shows, or the floor plan shows, that there is a storage kind of towards the south end of the, of the site. Storage is about four and a half feet by a little bit over 10 feet, approximately 47 square feet, kind of alluding to the small-scale type of wholesaling distribution business that the applicant is, is trying to get a conditional use permit for wholesaling distribution. Kind of sounds big in nature, but in this case, it's just very, very small scale at, at this point. Was she, what the applicant is trying to do, and meeting with staff and submitting the ABC request to the city council, is, at this point, is trying to obtain the, the product, which in this case are tequila bottles, and the, the name of this is El Varón del Desierto, which according to the applicant is not known in the United States right now, but it's a product of San Juan de los Lagos Jalisco. Jalisco is kind of known as, as, it's, it's kind of known, it's kind of like the Niwa Valley of grapevines for, for agave, for, for the product of, of tequila. And so what the hope is, is at this point, the applicant wants to start very low scale, essentially being able to obtain the product from the permitted broker who, who receives the product from Mexico, from the state of Jalisco, and then at this point personally just obtaining some of the product that would fit on the small storage, and then start marketing that product to vendors within, within the region. And the hope is that at this point, maintain low, low scale, but as hopefully her business grows, and she, and she does, obtain contracts, then at that point be able to either partner or be able to open up a, a facility where the product can be distributed to, to that site, and from that site be able to send shipment to the, to the establishments where the contracts may be obtained. At this point, it's, it's very small scale, to the point where there is a condition in the draft resolution that indicates that no more than two delivery truck, delivery shipments a week will be to and from the site, and in talking with the applicant, at this point it will be zero, it will be zero for a while, and it may not even get to that point of two delivery trucks per week. And her hope is to hopefully partner with somebody or obtain a, once she gets those contracts, obtain a different site, maybe in the M1 Light Industrial zoning district, and then at that point be able to deliver from, from that area. So that's, that's a summary in regards to the conditional use permit. The, the city council at its May 6 meeting accepted the, the ABC license after it was reviewed by the police department, fire department, and other departments from the City of Hollister. And so the North Gateway zoning district allows for wholesale and distribution with a conditional use permit, which is why she is here before you today requesting that approval. And again, small scale, what, what the conditions implemented in the resolution allowing for two vehicles, two vehicle trips per week, no more than that, class four truck, US truck, kind of similar to a UPS truck, no, no larger than that. So with that, the, the staff recommends that the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written oral testimony regarding the proposal, and approve conditional use permit 2019-4, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. Are there any questions for staff?
I, I had one comment that I couldn't help but notice, is on the ABC license review.
Yeah.
There was a sign-off for engineering, but engineering had not signed off on that.
Yes, I'm looking at it right now. The, the ABC license normally, when, when the applicant goes to the ABC license to, to ask for this request, the ABC normally, what, what they want is, they, they check with us, with the city, with the city to see if there's any type of approvals that the city requires, and essentially to be able to sign off on them. And the, the main, the main sign-off would be from, from the city council, which was done on May 6, but before that, it usually does get routed primarily to the Hollister Police Department. They're the ones that basically are the, probably the biggest department who would determine whether or not it, it should go there. But in this case, I am not sure why the engineering department was either bypassed or, or not. Maybe there was.
If, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Abraham, the, the city clerk, Christine Black, brings these forms typically once a week to the department head meetings, and she's very diligent with making sure the, the appropriate signatures are on each application that comes to us. So I, I don't believe engineering was required to, to sign off on this.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine with me. I just, just had engineering there with no signature, so just wanted to get a clarification on that.
That's good.
Any other questions on the staff report?
So in regards to the product, this is only for wholesale distribution?
That is correct. Yes, so it will be only for wholesale distribution. There will be no sales on sites. It's, it's just on, you know, wherever the contracts are made by the applicant and, and whoever is going to be purchasing the product. That's correct.
Understood, thank you.
It'll be a great business, I think, for the community. Too bad there's not a tasting room, so.
Well, looking at the price per bottle, I would say it's top shelf.
Right, yeah, no, this is, this is a big win for the community, and, you know, we have to foster businesses like this, and so.
Okay, Kevin, do you have any questions? Any for the questions?
I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you for that. I will now open the public hearing at 13 minutes to 7. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Only once? I don't think so.
The applicant is here, but, but I'm not sure. ¿Quisiera hacer algún comentario?
Does somebody have a question?
Okay.
Yeah?
Do we have any questions from the commission for the applicant?
I don't have any questions.
No, no, no questions. Thanks for attending.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other one else in the audience care to address, address the commission on this item? With no speakers, I will close public hearing now at 12 minutes to 7, and bring it back to the commission. So we have here a business, small business is trying to get started and grow the business eventually, that once it gets to a certain size, they'll maybe go to the M1 zoning district and, but just to kind of get their feet wet and, and test the waters out. So that's what we're, we're looking at here on this item.
Seems like a good business plan.
Like a good business plan, okay, yeah. I, I agree. So if there's not any further discussion on this item, I entertain a motion.
I will make the motion to approve the conditional use permit 2019-4, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution with PC resolution.
25.
2019-25?
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion on that? I have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That item has been approved. Congratulations, and good luck with that.
Congratulations.
Yes, okay. So that concludes item number six. Now we go into the amendments to Title 16 subdivisions and 17 zoning to the Hollister Municipal Code, and ordinance to amend miscellaneous sections of the Title 17 zoning and Title 16 subdivisions to assure internal consistency and minor clarifications in the Hollister Municipal Code for additions, clarifications, and corrections to standards for open space requirements and residential zoning districts, park and recreation area dedications and fees, residential densities, and the downtown commercial mixed-use DMU zoning district and neighborhood mixed-use. and the downtown commercial mixed-use DMU zoning district and neighborhood mixed-use.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This item is related to proposed amendments to uh, miscellaneous sections of uh, Title sixteen subdivisions of the Hollister Municipal Code to provide clarification of the code and to ensure um, consistency with state and local regulations.
Danny, if I might just step in here before you, you start in on this, is that, I, I'm just going through this. I'm just curious, and Brian, maybe you can kinda clarify.
Sure.
The reasons we're, we're going through these tweaks on the amendments to the municipal code when we have the general plan update looming in the horizon, and after, and as you know, that we're gonna have to go through this again after the general plan update and tweak our, our municipal code to correspond to the amended and updated general plan. Isn't that kinda jumping the gun a little bit on this?
Yeah, I, I understand um, your, your perspective, Chairperson Newboy, but we have some changes uh, that we recently made at the council level with the parks facility master plan, um, our impact fees. And so, uh, the section of the code, and I could be wrong, Danny, is that we're going to be changing um, park dedication.
Park dedication, uh, construction, and also for clarification and consistency with the subdivision map act.
And we have, you know, the, the general plan we've been talking about for about a year, it'll take two years to go through, once that starts, and we're looking for that to start, and probably in the fall. Um, these are really kind of important code changes we need to make um, i- from our day-to-day operation of, of different projects coming to, to the county.
Considering that you're getting these projects in and considering the time that's gonna take to update the general plan.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's an appropriate time to, to make these code changes, to be honest with you.
Okay, um, thank you. Sorry to step in there right before, but I thought I'd might, might just get that clarified, and now you can go on. Thank you, Danny.
Yeah, uh, Title sixteen provides regulatory guidelines for the design improvement and survey data of subdivisions, and to provide the form and content of tentative maps, parcel maps, and final maps. It also uh, establishes criteria for the conversion of existing multifamily residential units to condominiums, community apartments, or stock cooperatives while reducing the impact on residents affected by the conversion. Um, additionally, uh, it covers sections, as we just spoke about, um, related to uh, parkland dedications and um, uh, construction of those parks. Staff has prepared uh, draft ordinance which provides the necessary amendments to the city code to be consistent with the State of California Subdivision Map Act, City of Hollister Park Facilities Master Plan, and the City of Hollister's uh, General Plan. At this time, staff will provide a presentation to describe the proposed amendments to the planning commissioners and answer any questions the commissioners may have. Uh, following the presentation, staff will recommend that the planning commissioner uh, review the requests, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposed amendment, and approve the attached resolution recommending the city council adopt uh, the proposed ordinance with amendments to Title uh, um, uh, sixteen subdivisions, uh, subject to uh, recommended text changes that Mary will talk about here shortly. So, Mary, if you'd like to come on up.
I'd like to talk to, speak to some of the proposed text changes related to the conversion of rental units to condominiums. It, and around, I think, two thousand nine perhaps, the city council approved a condo conversion ordinance. So that, part of the reason for that was to be sure that there's enough rental housing in the city, in the multifamily unit spec- sector. Uh, so, we see that some of these text amendments really is housekeeping. The, the first recommended change is, is clarifying what a market rate multifamily rental unit is. There's a section in the condo conversion ordinance that speaks to where the, if there's conversion is, has a certain size, or if apartment complex has a certain size of units, there's a requirement for some affordability, but there was no definition for what market rate is. We also are re- recommending a text change in the ordinance that would, if we could move, I did, if you, no, I just wanted to point out here that uh, probably, if we could go, where were we, back there? No, um, this is uh, there, okay. In the, the subdivision ordinance, it speaks to the California Department of Housing and Community Development's median income limits, and it speaks to the household size as a, you can see the median income, it's, for a family of four, it's eighty-four thousand five hundred. That's the two thousand nineteen income limits. And then it's also tiered based on the size of a family. As it is, in subsection C of the code where it speaks to the affordable units, today it says that if there's any inclusionary unit, it, it's just linked to that household size of a family of four, which we don't think is really reasonable if it's a one-bedroom apartment. So what we're just trying to do is, is link it to the size of the unit. So if it's a one-bedroom apartment, then it would be tiered to that, that size of two u- of two bedrooms, or of two people as a household size. And then if there's two or more bedrooms, then it would be the family of four, just like on the table we showed you. This afternoon, we also noticed that there's an internal inconsistency within the subdivision ordinance because the definition of a low-income unit in the subdivision ordinance is a household that is, their income is eighty percent of the median income. And then the definition of a moderate-income household is a hundred twenty percent of the median income. But then in subsection C here, it speaks to having it linked to seventy, for the low-income household, for seventy percent of the gross household income. So we're recommending that be corrected to eighty percent, so it's consistent with the definition. And then the same for the moderate income, it, it says a hundred ten percent, and we're recommending that be amended in this subsection to be a hundred twenty percent. Does that make sense? It's just, I don't, I'm not sure how it wound up that way when it was adopted, but that's cleanup, we think it, it should be clearer that way.
Any questions on the definition for the affordability, affordability aspect of this?
The, uh, also, one of the things when the condo conor- conversion ordinance was adopted is it spoke to the fact that there could be conversions based on production, combination of things, actual production of rental housing, and then also making sure that at least twenty percent of the stock is rental housing, that, that's available in the marketplace. The, what we're recommending here is that it's based on the market rate rental units, because we've had some situations in the past where all of, or ninety percent or almost a hundred percent of the production was affordable housing. And if it, if conversions were, those affordable units we want, but they're not always available to everybody, and there's some people that are, they're like tweeners. They don't make enough money, they make too much money to qualify for affordable, or they tried to get into an affordable unit and they just lost out. And, but they make, or they maybe make just a little bit too much money to qualify as affordable, but they don't make enough money to purchase something. So, we're recommending that the average be based on the production of market rate multifamily rental units in this section, and that's the reason. Is there any questions?
Is this also keeping in mind locality here and for the, for the income levels as when we judge what is affordable uh, for lower income, I mean, for San Diego County?
Well, it's tiered to our median income.
So, it, it is?
Based on that chart, then that, that comes out annually.
Okay, so then?
So it's based, it, the affordability is tiered to that median income.
So, in a, in a sense that we're making it this more germane to our condition here, for our economic condition? Is that correct to say?
Well, it, I think we're also trying to make it more, right, right now is the, the way that we're, the code reads, is if it was a one-bedroom apartment, it could be sold to a person at the rate for, at the household eighty percent of the median income for a family of four. But really, if it's a one-bedroom apartment, maybe there could just be two people in the apartment, and maybe they wouldn't be able to afford a housing tiered pr- price, tiered to the family of four, 'cause that's a higher, if you look there, the income it for, well, I think eighty percent is around sixty-seven thousand for a family of four, but that, it would be proportionally less if it was a family of two. So then it would be a more reasonable way to afford a one-bedroom apartment. I think those are, pretty much summarizes the changes. Again, though, we're recommending that we, we have a memo, but that you am- amen, also further in your motion, have the amendment so that it changing the low income to eighty percent and the moderate to a hundred twenty percent. Today in the code, it says seventy percent. Did you give them the memo either? Okay, so you have the memo there. Is there any further questions?
Any questions on that?
How often do these tiers?
Seventy to eighty?
I had a question, how often do these tiers get adjusted?
The, the median incomes?
Yes.
Annually. I, I will say that for several years, it was eighty-one thousand four hundred, but it did, it just went up for the median.
Alright, for this section, um, we are updating, we were proposing various changes for this section, and instead of breaking it up and listing each one individually, uh, we're replacing this entire section, section sixteen point three-two point zero-one-zero. We're proposing that it be replaced entirety. Um, and it's just to make it a lot easier, instead of, you know, chopping it up and...
Yeah, the, the proposed changes that, that are gonna be shown here are highlighted in red. They're minor changes that are subtle, but there were several of them in this particular section. So she'll go for those sections with you.
So, um, this first paragraph, it's requiring that a tentative map and a fin- final map be required for dwelling or stock cooperative um, conversions containing five or more dwelling units with certain exceptions. So this is what was added to the paragraph, to this section. Then we continue uh, the section and we go on and add section, um, item D, E, and F. And uh, D is for covering minimum gross area of forty acres or at a minimum a quarter of an acre.
Yeah, and, and if I can add something here, as she goes across uh, these next three uh, items that are highlighted in red, uh, these are taken directly out of the subdivision map act. And again, uh, these types of changes are just to provide clarity uh, to developers and the public as they come in and have questions. Um, the beginning of um, of this code actually says that should there be any conflict between this code and state regulations with the subdivision map act, the subdivision map act prevails. All we're doing is clarifying these things by placing what's in the subdivision map act in our municipal code, so that when a developer comes in to process a map, a tentative map, parcel map, or final map, it's right there in the code, it's consistent.
And it makes it more complete then, so he doesn't have to look at the subdivision map act policy and, and conjunction with our municipal code.
Yeah, and so that we can go uh, through these slides a little bit more. Uh, and I have Socor just uh, read the portions that are in red, which are the minor changes. And then we'll have Christian wrap it up with the parkland dedications and construction changes.
Okay.
Great, and then um, item E is um, an exception for solely creating environmental subdivision. And item F was added for um, requiring parcel maps only for section A through E. The section of the code for the final map um, is updating the time limit for recording a final map. It used to be twelve months, now we're going to twenty-four months. And this is uh, from the day the tentative map was approved. Same thing here, um, it's updating the time limit for applying for a map extension, and it's for, going from twelve months to twenty-four months. Subsection C um, is amended to update the type of paper the final map would be printed on. The existing or current code is kind of antiquated, so we're updating it to be um, newer, some of the, to, to comply with the requirements that we have been um, requesting.
As you can see, it, it talks about tracing cloth and other things. And as people submit their final maps and parcel maps to the engineering department, they would submit those documents on Mylar, which is a more durable paper that has um, you know, ink drawings for, for signature and those types of things.
That may have been taken out of the eighteen ninety subdivision map act, the tracing cloth.
Can they be handcrafted?
Well, yeah.
They can.
That's a norm.
Well, hopefully that won't change.
Yeah.
Alright, subsection G is um, removing uh, certain dimension requirements where only feet will be um, used as a dimension. And then we're removing setbacks since setbacks are not conventional for some apps, these are under the zoning.
We'll speak on this also. The, the portion that, that's stricken there that talks about um, uh, meters and centimeters, I don't know, maybe if, uh, you, you guys remember a few years back, the state of California tried to lean towards a metric system, and then they went back and uh, this code was never updated, so we're striking it, we don't use a metric system.
Sixteen point four-zero point six-zero is submission procedure, and we are updating the requirements for submitting a final map. Again, the prior requirements were antiquated, so we're including, instead of this CPS,
CPS.
CPS and two blue line prints and ChartX print, we're requiring three bond copies and a digital PDF copy for submittal. We're also adding item four, which is the subdivision guarantee. Five, reference maps and documents, um, we're including it, we were, we already had private covenants and deeds restrictions. We're adding item six, current title report. Seven, traverse calculations, and eight, copy of approved tentative map.
And if I, if I can ju- again, jump in and just simply say that as you process a final map, there are certain things that you have to have before you can take it to the recorder's office. You have to have your subdivision guarantee. For us to be able to check the map, you have to have a current title report. We get title reports that come in that may be twelve months old, and they may have changed ownerships or whatever, so we cannot uh, review the map adequately. And these are just standard practices and procedures that um, are required. And again, um, they're, they're part of the code, they're just not spoken to, and that's just providing more clarification to the developers.
Okay, we're moving on to parcel maps, minor subdivisions, and miscellaneous land divisions. For this section, we're only removing the, the portion where it talks about um, anyone pretty much with the license, the state license is able to prepare a tentative map. So we're removing that portion.
State law only allows licensed uh, civil... State law only allows licensed civil engineer pre-eighty-two or a land surveyor to sign maps. You can't have a college degree and sign a map, you have to be a licensed individual to do that.
This section, we're updating the requirements to have a parcel map be recorded rather than prepared, it used to be prepared. And with that, we're requiring that the parcel map be recorded within twenty-four months of a tentative map approval, where it used to be twelve months of, that it need to be prepared within twelve months. So again, we're chasing, changing prepared to recorded in the time limit from one year to twenty-four months. And then instead of having the planning commission grant an extension within one year, we're asking that it'll be required sixty days prior to the tentative map expiration. Section E, we're updating the map's middle requirements for the parcel maps, similar as the final map. These are antiquated, so we're asking for the three bond copies, digital PDF, reference map, reference map and documents, current title report, traverse calculations, and not other documents as required by the city engineer.
Okay, and with that, we're going to allow Christian to come up and make his portion of the presentation as it relates to parkland dedication.
Mr. Chair. Okay, well, thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Yes.
Since we've hit an hour, we have students here, can we have a recess?
Certainly, certainly, I will call for a recess.
I'm sorry, you want me to recall?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
So on this item, there's like, right on there is only the subdivision, there's like two resolutions, one of them would be to approve section sixteen, which is chapter sixteen, which is subdivision, and then another one to approve chapter seventeen, which is only the number that will be presented. When he's done, do you want to say, open up the public hearing for this resolution, and then we'll go to the second resolution, chapter seventeen?
Exactly.
And then third, or should we say, this time I have, now we're going to have either hand, finish chapter seventeen, and when I'm done, pass a connecting on the two separate resolutions.
Come on, I still want to do something. Oh, oh, I want to give her a few more.
Okay.
I think we are ready to...
Ready to resume here?
Start the party over.
Okay, now, I had a, had a request from city council to recall number three before we go into the open space amendments, so that's what I, I will do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number three, again, is tentative map twenty sixteen dash three, extension and conditional use permit twenty sixteen dash six for planned unit development. Mr. Chairman, you had indicated that you were going to recuse yourself from consideration of this matter, which leaves us without a quorum. The difficulty with that is that our next meeting is on June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, and the tentative map will expire on June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. So what I'll ask is that we do continue this matter until June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, we have a motion to that effect, and then I would ask the applicants, in the meantime, to file for an extension of the tentative map, which grants an automatic sixty-day extension of that tentative map, which should be plenty of time for the council, excuse me, for the planning commission to consider the extension and also to take action on this item.
So...
During its regularly scheduled June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen meeting.
Right, and that's the only way we're going to be able to deliberate on this, if they file for the extension.
That's correct.
Okay.
It appears that Commissioner Johnson will not be able to make it this evening.
Okay. Do I have consensus on, on that request?
If you'd like, I can state the motion, and someone can adopt it.
Okay.
As their own. So we're to be looking for a motion regarding agenda item number three, tentative map twenty sixteen dash three, extension and conditional use permit twenty sixteen dash six for planned unit development, to continue this matter until the planning commission's regularly scheduled hearing on June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, and to continue the public hearing on that matter as well.
So that, that's in the form of a motion, then?
Yes.
Okay.
That's an amendment to the motion that was in, that's, that's the motion that's in, in?
That's the motion that we're continuing, subject to the letter for the extension, for the extension request from the applicant. Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and second that motion then.
No, so moved.
For the discussion on it?
So I think he, he gave the wording of the motion, and I will say so moved.
Okay.
And then we can have a second script.
We don't, we don't need, we don't...
We'll need a motion.
He, Commissioner Henderson moved, we'll need someone to make a second, and then a vote on it.
I'll make the second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are continued on item number three to June twenty-seventh, subject to the filing of the letter for extension from the applicant.
And I believe the applicant will come into the building department, planning department tomorrow morning to submit the extension request. All right, see you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks for attending. Okay, okay, Christian, you know, talk about the open space and all those many...
Good evening, Commissioner. This next section is chapter sixteen point five-five, which refers to the park and recreational area dedication and fees. There are some major changes, and some of the changes that we're actually doing to it is used to clear the chapter as it reads in some sections and in some other sections of the same chapter, it doesn't read some of the changes, so we're trying to make everything consistent. So the first change is to the purpose of chapter sixteen point five-five point zero-one-zero. In this case, the parks facility master plan got adopted in May two thousand nineteen, so we're making the change to update this section and remove the parks facility master plan adopted in two thousand two, and now it's going to read that it was adopted in two thousand nineteen, as some of those changes, and I will go into more detail in the next slides, refer to the amount of land that is supposed to be dedicated for every thousand people, which went from four acres per every thousand to five acres for every thousand. Another change, an addition that we're doing to this section is that the subdivider shall dedicate land, but also provide recreational improvements to the dedicated land. So that section is, is a new section that we are adding to it, so that it's clear throughout the chapter. As Danny Hill's talking, indicated, it's also consistent with the subdivision map act, so that's the main reason why we're making this change.
To make it consistent with the subdivision map act.
Correct. And this next section is the general standards, as I mentioned before, we're striking the four acres for every thousand, and we're updating it to the five acres for every thousand to be consistent with the parks facility master plan that was just recently adopted. Section sixteen point five-five point zero-two-two is a whole new section that we're adding to it. Essentially, what we're trying to accomplish with this section is that when the project moves forward with the dedication of land, we want to make sure that we have some type of regulations in place as far as what could be dedicated as park and recreational facilities. So in this case, we're adding the section that talks about the land dedication or reserve for parks and recreational purposes shall be suitable in location, topography, environmental characteristics, and development potential as related to the intended use. So in this case, we want to make sure that when it comes to the planning commission and when it goes before the Parks and Rec Commission, that is something that is suitable to the city and also the citizens. Another section will be subsection A of the same, chapter sixteen point five-five point zero-two-two. The principles consideration shall be given to lands that offer the following, so in this case, we're going to make sure that they, they do follow the regulations that we're putting in place with this chapter. Subsection B is the criteria for land that is not eligible, so we also want to make sure that that's clear, so that when the developer or the subdivider provides the dedicated land, they have a better understanding of what the city will accept as land dedication and what would not be accepted. In this case, one would be private open space. Private open space is considered, you know, the property's backyard, side yard, so we want to make sure that that's not something that is being contemplated as dedicated to the city as well. Section that talks about requirements, this section is just essentially adding a subsection B that reads essentially the same as subsection A, in this case is used to clarify that every residential subdivider shall, as a condition of filing a final subdivision map or parcel map, shall provide recreational improvements, pay in lieu of recreational improvements, or a combination of both. Subsection E was added so that when we read the code, it's also consistent with the city's zoning code that has requirements for common open space and dedication, so we want to make sure that aside from the requirements under chapter sixteen, that the subdivider or developer is also meeting the requirements under the zoning code. The next section is the formula for dedication of land. Since the parks facility master plan was updated, it went from four to five acres for every thousand, so we have to change and update that, so the formula will change for single-family and multifamily, so it went from the four acres to five acres, and also the section that refers to the two thousand census, which bases the three-point-five-two persons per unit, we are changing that to say the most current United States census, so that as it changes, we could make the change without having to come back every single time, because as the commission may know, it's constantly changing, so sometimes we're going to have years where the numbers will go up, and there's times where the numbers will go down. This subsection B from fees in lieu of land dedication and recreational improvements is also added, as I mentioned before, that section was silent throughout the chapter, which refers to the recreational improvements, so in this case, if the city requires fee to be paid in lieu of recreational improvements, those fees shall be equal to the park construction impact fee adopted by city council resolution as from time to time amended. So in this case, if the developer decides not to improve the dedicated land and construct the park, they will have to pay the fees, and those fees will be the most updated ones as far as park construction impact fees. Subsection B of credits, any recreational improvements to the dedicated land as authorized by the city shall be equal to the amount of fees to be collected in lieu of recreational improvements. So in this case, we want to make sure that if the project is required to dedicate an amount of, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars' worth of park equipment, that is equal to what the city's required. If for any reason, the development or the subdivider goes above and beyond that requirement, is the responsibility of the subdivider, and the city will not be responsible to reimburse them for the, for the excess amount that they spent. Subsection C of credits, there's just one small change, we're adding planned development as the city has seen more projects that have the multifamily and the single-family projects, so we want to make sure that it's also consistent within chapter sixteen. And also, we updated the section of the Civil Code from thirteen fifty-one to four-one-zero-zero, which is the most current one, that determines the percentage when a project gets to dedicate the land under the chapter sixteen and also chapter seventeen of the zoning code. In this case, we're also making a change, chapter sixteen reads as private open space, but the zoning code refers as common open space, so... but the zoning code refers as common open space, so we wanna make sure that it's consistent, because the zoning code, when you look at private open space, we're referring as their backyards, their side yards, and that was the confusion we had with the chapter sixteen, that chapter sixteen saw it as private open space when in reality it's actually common open area, so we added that section, and we striked out this section that talks about private open space, because it doesn't relate to the chapter. This section, as I mentioned before, is used to make things clear, it's just adding recreational improvements to subsection one and subsection three and four. Subsection B, same thing, is just adding recreational improvements, so that it reads that they have to do the dedication of land, recreational improvements, in lieu fees or a combination of both. And the section that you see that says thirteen-five-one, a land and fees, that was a typo, so that shouldn't be there, just to make that clear. Section of site dedication, same thing as I mentioned before, the only section that we're adding is recreational improvements, so that it reads clear to... And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Christian.
Okay. And so with that, staff recommends that the city, or the planning commission, open the public hearing, review the request, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposed amendments, and approve the attached resolution recommending to the city council the adoption of the proposed ordinance with amendments to Title sixteen subdivision with the recommended text changes.
Do we also, were we going to have a presentation on the, some of the open space changes? Is that, is that part of this?
That's coming up next.
That's coming up next. So is this a separate, then, a separate?
This is, yeah, this is a separate.
Resolution?
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't see that. I didn't see that on, what, what we've been discussing here on the agenda specifically. So, I don't know if there's an issue with that, but... Because what was on the agenda for item number seven was open space requirements, unless I'm missing something.
You're correct, Chair President Hibo, the agenda does have chapter sixteen and chapter seventeen on item number seven. If it, if it is the desire of the planning commission to adopt or to make a motion, and make a determination on this chapter sixteen, because there is two resolutions, one for chapter sixteen, and the other one is for chapter seventeen, or if you prefer, we can go on to chapter seventeen and then do two separate, two, two separate motions, one for chapter sixteen and one for chapter seventeen. We just figured that you do chapter sixteen right now, and then you, and then we go and do number seventeen right after.
Okay, so it was, it was just on the, the title was what we, we just heard on the report was on title, the title sixteen subdivisions?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, however.
It wasn't clarified in the description there.
Correct. The notice is proposed, yeah.
So we can, we can now, I can, I will open the public hearing at seven-thirty-five, and is there anyone in the audience?
Mr. Shaheenian, do you have any comments?
No, I'm fine, I understood it all perfectly, I'm perfectly comfortable, thank you.
Okay. So without any further speaking, speakers, I will close the public hearing now at seven-thirty-five. And I entertain a motion on what we've heard about the, the park dedication and also the, the first part of the title sixteen amendments relating to condominium conversions and, and Mary's presentation on the affordability aspects. You have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the attached resolution recommending to the city council the adoption of the proposed ordinance and amendments to Title sixteen subdivisions.
With, with the text changes, as described in the...
The men.
With the text changes as described.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Further discussion? I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So the amendments to Title sixteen now gets moved on to the city council.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So now, at this time... This time, entertain a staff report on the open space title seventeen changes and amendments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. On chapter seventeen, we have, we have a few, we have about four, four items. The first one entails open space, kind of alluding to what my colleague Christian was mentioning. Then there is another item on the densities for downtown commercial mixed use, another item for the densities in the neighborhood of mixed use, and then the item number four would be on stormwater management. For item seventeen oh-four oh-four-oh, the ordinance, the draft ordinance that you have on your, on your packet and on the slide before you, essentially currently section seventeen oh-four oh-four-oh, residential open space. As you can see on the left-hand side of the screen, the existing ordinance talks about, or speaks to multifamily only, and it speaks to private open space for multifamily only and common open space. The private open space is essentially, what it relates to is that every multifamily unit should have at least one hundred square feet of private open space at the ground level, or at minimum sixty-four square feet at the, at, like in the form of a balcony. And so, some of the changes that we would like to make is, we would like to make section seventeen oh-four oh-four-oh speak to just private and, and common open space for everything, not just for multifamily, but for single family as well. So we wanted to make sure that, and Eva already kinda went, went over it last time, my colleague Eva, so I'm just basically reiterating what she indicated, summarizing it on a formal resolution for a formal ordinance recommendation.
Abraham, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just would like the record to be known that Commissioner Johnson has joined the meeting.
Welcome, and we did indicate at the beginning that we, we were expecting you if, if you had finished your, your commitment earlier today, thank you. Thank you for doing that, I know you had a family reunion, so thank you for that. So just, just to continue, essentially what we wanna do is indicate on, on this section that the R-one and the RE zoning districts, which is essentially just the districts where, where it allows to have single-family residential homes, all we're doing is moving that private open space from its current section to this section to indicate one thousand square feet at ground level. That, that's all it is, and so right now, that's private open space on a single-family home for front yard, backyard is one thousand square feet. All we're doing is just moving it to this section, so that way this section seventeen oh-four oh-four-oh talks all about private and common open space for all sec, for all zoning districts for clarity. Number two, A-two would say, would talk about also that what Christian was, was talking about a little while ago on the Quemby Act. So right now, per the adoption of the city council's park master plan, now we're gonna have five acres of park for every one thousand person, so, so essentially, that's still gonna stay on, on the, on the code, now it's gonna refer to five acres of park instead of four acres of park per, per one thousand. And so, the developer, you know, would be able to propose open space on site, common open space on site, or an in lieu, in lieu fee. However, us as a city will have the discretion of, of what we prefer, if we prefer to have the open space or if we prefer to collect the, the fee. And usually, that discretion is, is highly motivated or highly inspired by whether there is an existing open space park near the vicinity of, of the existing, of the proposed project. But that's in a case-by-case basis. The section B of seventeen oh-four oh-four-oh will refer to multifamily in the R-three, medium-density residential zoning district, R-four, high-density residential zoning district, mixed use for, for residential units in the mixed-use zoning district, and also in the R-one performance overlay zone, because as you well know, on the R-one performance overlay zone, we don't necessarily just adopt single stand, single-family homes, standard six thousand square foot lots. As your commission has, has well done in the past, you know, we, with the performance overlay zone and the conditional use permit, we allow for multifamily residential units in, even if it's an R-one zoning district, as long as it's within the performance overlay zone. And you do that because you recognize that there is a high need in the community for, for multifamily stock. And so, we just wanna make sure that, that it's now in the code that if they are gonna provide multifamily residential units in the R-one LPZ zoning district, that they also meet the private and common open space requirements. And so, for example, in the R-three, medium-density residential zoning district, the private open space at ground level, the requirement is gonna be that they, they have at minimum five hundred square feet. Previously, it, it, it was at minimum one hundred square feet, but we wanna make sure that, that there is at least five hundred square feet at private, of private open space at ground level for single-family residential units in the R-three zoning district. If there are, and the R-one zoning district is still staying at one thousand. Did you have a question on that, Chair President Hibo?
And, and the rea, I know this goes along with the R-two, you're cha, you're changing, modifying the, I guess this, similarly, the open space requirement from the current of one hundred, let's say the minimum requirement for a ground level, private space has modified from the current one hundred, minimum to two-hundred-fifty feet minimum. Or did I get that? I'm just trying to get the intention of, in the R-three zoning, that you're going to five hundred, what's, what's the intention of that?
The intention of that, Chair President Hibo, is that for single, for single-family homes in the R-three, they can actually, per the, the way their code reads right now, they can, they can propose one hundred square feet, and they would be in compliance. So, we, we feel that for single-family homes in the R-three, really the intent is to have a more of a multifamily component, but as long as they meet the density of eight to twelve dwelling units per acre, they can have single-family homes. But at that point, we, we would prefer, in order for the, the homes to have a little bit more of an open space, they should have at least five hundred square feet of private open space. And this is just for single-family homes in the medium-density residential...
What if they have trouble meeting that density of eight to twelve, is it eight to twelve units per acre?
If, if they have trouble meeting that density, on, on multifamily units in the R-three, they can still, the code currently says one hundred, one hundred square feet of ground, of, of open space, private open space at the ground level, but, but we're, we're hoping to up that up to a minimum two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, so they can have a little bit more of an open space. However, if they have trouble, then they have a, they have a, they have an option to have, for example, balcony space, and, and, and that's at sixty-four, sixty-four square feet. So, they can, they can still be able to, to work it out in, in that form.
Okay.
The, the other, the other adjustment to this zoning code would be that, that right now, it's, it's not clear of, of the common open space that, that's required in the multifamily. We wanna make sure, as a city, that multifamily developments have open, common open space on, on their project. Not necessarily, single-family low-density residential zoning district gives, gives the applicant the option of providing common open space or paying in lieu fee, you know, at least, at least as a proposal. And then, then we have the discretion, you have the discretion to choose either, either or. For multifamily, we want to make sure that when they submit something to us, that they actually do provide, that they don't have the option, but they do provide some common open space in addition to their Quemby Act requirements of open space. And so, the change, the zoning update, as Eva also explained last month, would be that each unit has, each multifamily unit requires to submit five hundred square feet of, of open space, and that can be used in combination of private or common. So for example, if there is a fourplex that comes in, if a fourplex comes in, then, then the site has to have five hundred square feet of open space for each unit. So that means, that means that the site should have a minimum of two thousand square feet of open space. And so, that can be done in the form of either having, like, for example, if each unit has a hundred square feet of balcony space, then that means that there has to be a common area of one thousand six hundred square feet at minimum of, of, of open space as well. So that, that just, that just solidifies the requirement for, for private and common open space on, on the project. That's all we're doing. We're not changing the minor amenity and the major amenity, that still is a requirement. If, if the development is between two to twenty-five units, they have to provide a minor amenity, which consists of picnic tables, a small totla, things of that nature. If it's, if the development is twenty-six units or more, then they have to provide a major amenity, which can be basketball courts, tennis courts, volleyball courts, baseball field, things of that nature. So, so we're not changing that, we're just, we're just solidifying the open space requirements and, and connecting them to chapter sixteen subdivision for the Quemby Act with that update of five acres per thousand people instead of four acres per thousand people. That's all for, for this, for this section. Any questions on, on, on this section of, of the title seventeen?
Any questions on this section? Very good, proceed.
Okay. We have three more sections that we're looking at, and so currently the downtown mixed-use zoning district indicates that per, per section seventeen oh-eight, seventeen-one-eight, one, oh-one-oh, D-one, it says, "The downtown mixed-use zoning district provides for a vertical or horizontal combination of commercial and residential uses around the central core of the community. The designation is intended to encourage ground floor pedestrian-friendly retail sales and services, and service uses with upper floors of office and residential uses. The DMU district should be a unique destination with restaurants, theaters, boutique, retail, neighborhood convenience stores, regionally oriented specialty stores, medical and dental offices, and residential densities of twenty-five to forty." Currently it says forty, our change is to have forty-five units per net acre.
That was, excuse me, that, because that was discrepancy with the general plan and the, and the zoning...
Exactly.
Regulation on the density.
Exactly, thank you for, for that, Chair President Hibo. Table L U two, land use calculations beneath indicates the general plan, where it says DMU circled here in red, it says twenty-five to forty-five dwelling u, dwelling units per acre. So all we're doing is just making that correction for the zoning code to be consistent with the general plan. So that's, that's the, the second aspect of the zoning, of the change for title seventeen. And the third aspect for, for the change on title seventeen is that currently the mixed use, right, right above the table of our general plan where it says downtown commercial mixed use, the mixed use says twenty-five to forty dwelling units per acre, however, our zoning code says twenty-five to thirty-five dwelling units per acre. So we wanna make sure that, to include that change as well, just, just for consistency and clarification of our zoning code to be consistent with our general plan. Those are the two minor changes for, for the zoning code, or actually the third, the three changes. The next one is in regards to stormwater management, and the engineering department will come in to clarify that.
Was there, speaking of the, like, the downtown DMU?
Yeah.
Were, were there any amendments to the open space requirements there for the downtown mixed use?
No, for the downtown mixed use, it would be just for the residential component of it, and, and that's just essentially for, for the private and common open space. So each unit should have at least five hundred square feet of open space, and that could be a combination of, 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 of both. So they've provided a hundred square feet of private.
What was it previously?
Previously, it's a hundred square feet for private, sixty, it's just a hundred square feet of private, and then whatever the Quemby Act indicated for the multifamily component.
So we're increasing, we're, we're, we're increasing the open space requirement for residential units in the, in the DMU?
For the, for the common open space only.
That, that, that might, because of the, I think there might be some issues there, some, some constraints, because of...
For the densities.
You know, for the, for that, I, I don't know if, if, how feasible that would be.
And, and you bring up a good point, Chair President Hibo. What we've been, what we've been trying to incorporate is five hundred square feet in addition to the private. And so, and so we've been, we've been working with, with, I know that, that... and so we've been, we've been working with, with, I know that the developers have indicated that that's been constraints, um, but we've been working with them and they've actually been providing product that meets that, that criteria. Not in all cases, but it, but it does. So we're, so we're trying to meet halfway and say, okay, if, if, um, 500 square feet in addition to the private open space is not feasible, then, then we can do a mixture of both. We can do the, the, um, 500 square feet for both the private and common open space. And so, that, that's a little bit more feasible, which is why...
When you look at that a case-by-case, um, basis, there might be some constraints that would be subject to a variance on that.
And that, and, and you're absolutely correct. In the past, we have brought before you, um, uh, the way that we bring it before you is, uh, through a conditional use permit for a planning unit development. And if, and if there are constraints on that, then as part of that conditional use permit for planning unit development, we indicate that the constraints, um, have been, um, um, issued for this project. And so, then we require that you, that you, um, make that variance or that...
Okay, so in theory, in theory it's nice, but we'll see in practicality. There might, there might be some issues.
Right, right.
We'll see. Okay, thank you.
You got it. You're welcome.
Okay, so for stormwater management, chapter 17, point 16, point 140, some of the updates that we, um, have are to include new development and redevelopment in the requirements for stormwater. Um, and instead of listing the requirements of, of the detention of stormwater runoff on the property to pre-development requirements, we are directing them to comply with all, um, state MS4 general permit requirements.
And just so I can provide a little bit more clarification, um, the, the MS4 general permit, that's, uh, for post-construction. That's the California Regional Water Quality Control Board that has required this. Um, it's something that, uh, we have been involved with for several years. This is a long time coming, just making this up.
Thank you there, Dan.
Then some of the requirements for the MS4 permit is with regard to drainage. And we are adding item one, uh, which is a design for new development and redevelopment post-construction drainage improvements. These improvements, um, shall be in accordance to the State Water Quality Control Board for the Central Coast Region. Um, then we go to item three. We're including parks as a multi-use stormwater management facility. We're adding item four. Uh, this is, instead of open retention and detention ponds, we, um, are asking for the construction of underground stormwater infiltration basins for new and redevelopment projects. And if not feasible, um, then the design engineer will have to submit a letter, um, explaining the reasons why it's not feasible. They, they will have to submit it to our city engineer for, um, considerate, review consideration.
Yeah. And if I can, again, add a little more clarification to this. This seems to be the growing trend. Everybody is, uh, going towards these underground chambers to infiltrate, um, stormwater into the ground for groundwater recharge. They provide an added benefit that the surface over the top of the detention basin can provide for open space or parks or, you know, something. Um, I believe, uh, at, uh, one of the last council meetings that we were, um, at, that the council seemed encouraged by these things. I think it was Marty Richmond that had asked about, um, uh, these underground chambers. So this is a good thing. It's that if it's feasible for a developer to do it, they should take every effort to move towards doing that. And if they can't do it, they need to submit something to me, so, uh, proving out that they can do it.
And then for item five, um, the, the, the existing, um, asks for an, an en-lue fee to pay, um, if they were not able to meet the pre-drainage standards. Instead of the pre-drain, drainage standards, we're, um, saying they have to meet the post-construction drainage standards. So, and if they can't meet those, then they'll have to pay a fee. For subsection B, this is the requirements for grading permit to meet the MS4 permit requirements. And, um, this one is just more specific to items and activities that require a grading permit. And it's for clarity. Um, this one's staying the same. Uh, two, under subsection C, uh, it's for stormwater quality requirements, again, for the MS4 permit requirements. We're adding stormwater to this for clarity. It, it was, it didn't have that before.
Yeah, the, the title was in error. It should say stormwater best management practices instead of best management practices. Uh, again, down at the bottom, you see a strikeout from city manager. That should have been city engineer. And just little minor changes to clarify some things. Uh, Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, as we deal with, uh, developers, again, and the public and things. This is just providing added clarification to these sections.
And that's it for this section.
Okay. Thank you, Sokol.
Right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, Sokol. And Danny.
So with this, staff recommends that, uh, the planning commission open up the public hearing, take, um, and comment, and, um, approve res, the resolution, the draft resolution recommending to the city council changes to chap, chapter 17 zoning, um, code of the Halaishram Municipal Code. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions on the report on chapter 17, or title 17? From the commission? No questions on the report. I'll open up the public hearing at three minutes to eight. Yes, sir. Would you care to come to the podium and state your name and address the commission?
I'm Lee Shanian. I just wanna be sure I understand the, the last part there correctly. Abraham, so in other words, if, uh, if there were a, a multifamily development with 30 per acre perhaps, and so 90 units for a three-acre development, you could be talking about, um, an acre of, an o, an acre of open space, basically. Of course, that would be somewhat mitigated by balconies, by private patios, but is that, is that a correct understanding?
If it's, um, nine, 90 units at 500, uh, square feet each, multifamily, um, it would be 45, about an acre, yeah. Um, and that can be mitigated with, with, um, you know, private open space and or common open space. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Lee. I believe that is the only speaker in the audience.
Mr. Cowboy, you have anything?
Oh, you changed his personality there. Okay. Oh, would you, something else? Okay, go ahead.
To follow up, and I was speaking to Chairman Huwai's, uh, comment, and it's, this could be a, might, might, in some situations, require variance, or could be a, could be a significant impact on the, on the project, I would think. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing now at one minute to eight. And, uh, was there any comments or discussions on the open space presentation and amendments to title 20, 20, title 17? Did I get that right, or is it? It is title 17 zoning.
I have a question. So, I noticed there's, this came up in city council meeting, and I noticed a, a typo that's in section 17 of the municipal code, but it's, you know, not covered here. So, I'm wondering what would be the proper procedure to bring that up?
Where is the typo?
In, uh, section 17 dot 24 dot 140, call of appeals. And, and item C, it makes reference to, uh, table 12 dot dash 24 dash one, but it's actually table 17. So, I think that probably what happened was, this probably used to be a section 12, and they just didn't update the...
That's probably what happened. Would you like, uh, staff to address that?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Um, so normally what we do is, um, and, and we have a list of items kind of that, that occur, um, over, over some time. If it's not like imminent, if it's not something that, if it's something that we can explain, we just kind of write it down as a list, and then every, on the list, and every three, four months will come and, and let you know that there is some zoning amendments or, or certain code amendments to change. Um, and what we need to do is, we actually have the public notice there. We have to send out that section, uh, of the code, um, uh, in, in the public notice to a newspaper and indicate that we will have a public hearing on that. Um, and then, and then we have the public hearing here and to make those changes. So we can definitely note it, Commissioner Henderson, and, and bring it back in our next rounds of, of, um, updates. If that's okay.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion on this?
I have none.
Okay, thank you, Kevin, for that. I'll entertain a motion on, on the amendments to 17, title 17, as presented. I'll go ahead and make the motion that, uh, we approve, is, am I doing this right? Is there a resolution?
Yes, 2019 dash 27.
2019 dash 27?
Correct.
With the amendments as presented and forward this to the city council for adoption.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll move that forward. Some of these, uh, going through it, some, it's, it's, well, I'm not gonna say amazing, but it's remarkable that some of these, uh, these corrections or these provisions that's subject to correction have been in existence for such a period of time.
Yeah, we really need to give the staff a big round, round of applause. They, they put their blood, sweat, and tears, past couple of months, doing it. So, thank you.
It's, it's, it's...
Thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you.
And, and just to think, there's more work after we do the general plan update.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah. Well, thanks a lot. I know that, put a lot of hard work in, into that. And, uh, it's, it's rather tedious, but it's incomprehensive, but it certainly is very necessary important that we go through this. So, next on the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business to report?
I don't think we have any new business.
There's none of the business.
Business is business, though, you know?
Oh, yeah. There's a lot of that.
That's what they say. Uh, any old business?
Council recently, uh, rescinded the third meeting of the month. Uh, so, that's, we've been having the first, the third, and the fourth Mondays of each month as a city council meeting since January, I believe. Um, they rescinded that this past week. So, we're going to two meetings a month, um, starting in June. So, just as an FYI, so...
Yeah, first of discussion on that. Planning Department reports?
There are none.
Planning Commission reports. I, I have a, just a little thing to say or about the forthcoming holiday, Memorial Day, and just wanna say that, uh, let us all remember with gratitude those who have served, those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our freedom. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. That's very kind of you.
I appreciate you going out of your way to, to mention that. I was gonna say the same remarks in, in regards to the Memorial Weekend that we're about to, um, celebrate. So thanks for bringing that up.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Um, I have a quick thing, real quick. Did you guys move, um, one of the, I'm sorry?
The tentative map?
One of the tentative maps. I, I was watching earlier when I was...
Yeah, no, it's, we, we tabled it to the latter part of the meeting, and, uh, we just made the decision to, uh, bring that to the June.
To June, okay. I didn't hear that part. I heard the waiting until the end in case I got here or not. And so I didn't know if you guys had tabled it until June. So, I just wanted to make sure.
It's all good.
Okay.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks.
Thanks for coming in, though.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. That's very kind of you. This is the time where there's a lot of graduation and all kinds of things going on. Yeah.
Yes.
So, I just appreciate you getting down here.
Thank you.
So, without any other reports, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned until June 27th. Thank you for coming.